Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I'll declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate, the building's council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the One or All people as the traditional custodians of this land we're meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjunk people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Setnok local government area. For the prayer tonight, I'd like to invite Pastor Rachel Main from Beyond Church forward to lead us in prayer. Councillors, please stand.
Evening everyone, thanks for having me back. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite you to a Beyond Church Christmas coming up in a couple of weeks. I'll leave some invitations here. Let's pray. Dear God, thank you for the opportunity to focus on you for a moment and to serve our great city by praying over the events of tonight. I pray you bless each of the councillors and staff here tonight who are serving our community and making decisions in our best interests. I also pray that during tonight's meeting and as we lead up to celebrating the birth of Jesus this Christmas, that our lives would bear the fruit of your spirit: love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness and self-control. I thank you that we can always bring our cares and concerns to you and you promise to listen to them and that you loved us enough to send Jesus to the world to show us the best way to live. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Main. We have a request for a leave of absence from councillor Olson from the eleventh of November through to the twenty-seventh of November inclusive. Someone moving, that be accepted? Councillor Sander, seconded councillor Wharton. No debate, we'll put that item, all those in favour, unanimous. Moving on to confirmation of the previous minutes, someone moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Dunn. No debate, we'll put those, all those in favour, unanimous. Disclosures of interest. Councillor Judd.
Thank you Mr Mayor, totally really missed that one again. Report number WI thirty-seven slash twenty twenty-three. I Jessica Judd declare the following appearance, pecuniary interest for the reason that family member works there. Thank you.
And you'll leave the chamber? Yep. Moving on, no other disclosures of interest, no petitions, public address. We have two people speaking tonight on report PE thirty-nine twenty twenty-three. So first up, I would like to invite Mr Brad Sneddon to come forward to the lectern to speak in favour of the recommendations. And thank you, Mr Sneddon, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you Mayor, councillors and staff for the opportunity. I'm a consultant town planner and I represent the family immediately adjacent. Three minutes is not a lot of time to cover the issues, so I will start with a summary and a conclusion to make sure that they come out and then spend the rest of the time elaborating on the material that I have gained from the family, which is a lot of photographs and so forth that'll hopefully help the audience appreciate the issue better because obviously you don't live next door to the operation where they do, so they have a first-hand knowledge. So I think we should gain from that. So clearly we support the assessment. Clearly we believe that the DA documentation does not state the impact properly. It's clearly an overdevelopment and significant overdevelopment. It's not just seven oh seven, it's also seven thirteen that received these impacts and I've seen correspondence from them suggesting the same. So the key things I want to demonstrate are the impact to amenity, privacy and public safety users of Lovedale Road as well as site users. Clearly, I think the word that I notice in the DCP is that development in the vineyards area should be sympathetic and I think it's clear that this is not. I'll jump straight to the conclusion because I don't want to miss that in three minutes. The landowners obviously have got some concerns and they've got some questions. Apart from the fact that the first top point there is talking about the fact that they've received advice that their property value has lowered as a result of the large uncontrolled operation next door. But there are other questions they've got, which is, you know, they have been informed that there's more planned for this site. That's always concerning. Does that mean there's more retrospective approvals coming? There's a history of flouting the regulations now over the last few years, so that's obviously a concern because what do approvals mean for this particular site? The DA history. So the site development history, for those who have read the report, is known. But what is also, needs to be importantly noted is that this ongoing intensification has been done knowingly against planning laws, against the liquor licence and against COVID orders. Quickly, this figure's not in the DA, this figure's not in the DA but it shows you how close everything is. Eighteen metres to the boundary, sixty-five metres to the operations. It's only a hundred and twenty-five metres to the other neighbour and sixty metres to the rear. As that figure can show you, that's a lot happening in a very small distance. That's what eighteen metres looks like, so there's the car park and front doors. There's eighteen to sixty-five metres and that's what the separation looks like from their front door to all the operation and that's obviously when things are very quiet. The list down there below is what happens in that, it's all about a space. This is a good figure to just help you understand how much is actually happening on the site.
So we have a mover for an extension of time, councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Wharton. All those in favour, it's unanimous, so one further minute.
Okay, thank you. This is an important slide. This is just an intention to show how much activity takes place on different times of the day, night, weekends and the proximity. You can see the large crosshatching area shows you where the lot of car parking is and how close that is. The driveway is obviously the hub of activity and how close that driveway is. So it's a site planning problem for the operation. It's not to suggest that the operation shouldn't take place on the site but that figure shows you the severe problems that we have in front of us. Council reports, as I said, back up the fact that there's been a history of non-compliance on the site. There's correspondence between council staff and the neighbours and there's just a handful of statements there. Proof of the non-compliance and the history. Same with the hours of operation. Whilst the hours of operation have been stated in the DA documentation in the assessment report, that's not how the site actually operates. There's photographic evidence of the times that people do use the site and leave the site after hours, after the liquor licence, outside the liquor licence. And that doesn't include, and the DA is also pretty silent on all the truck movements that come with that. The next slide's a good one, this is all the active.
Sorry, so further extension times moved councillor Wharton. You're allowed two. Yeah, so it's moved councillor Wharton and seconded councillor Hawkins. All those in favour, unanimous, so this is one further minute and can't be extended anymore.
This is a great slide, it just shows you all, this is all advertised, you can find this information on the internet. These are all the activities, the events, so to speak, that take place, the time and dates there. It generates all the things down on the right-hand side and these are all outside of approvals. The DA, well the council's assessment report also tears apart that report and I concur as a town planner of thirty years' experience, it doesn't address the section four fifteen appropriately. There's lots of misleading statements in there that, the second one there, that the existing cafe in Selahdora is consistent with surrounding land uses. The next photographs will show that's clearly not. The assessment report also states that it doesn't even meet the relevant LEP objectives. So it's a clear sign that there's major issues if you can't meet the LEP objectives. That's the clear planning basis you must meet to start with before you address the DCP. The acoustic amenity, that figure shows you how open this site is, so noise travels extremely well through their site to this site and to the next site.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions of Mr Sneddon councillor Wharton?
Yeah, thank you Mayor Savile, thank you for that presentation. You mentioned acoustic amenities. Can you speak a little bit further to what that may look like?
Yep, I can. Well, the acoustic report, it doesn't address the issue at all in the DA. It doesn't really provide any options, it doesn't assess temperature inversions, for example, that happen in this area during the winter nights and how well noise travels. A sound barrier only work if they're right at the point source or if they're right at the receiver. So putting it on a boundary fence means that noise can go straight out the top of it unless it's five metres high, but then, so it.
Five metres?
You've got to talk metres to stop the noise travelling over it. So the further away the noise is from the receiver, if a barrier is somewhere in the middle, it's not going to do anything unless, as I said, it's extremely high. But in this instance, it would have to be around the entire southern and western boundary of the property, which means you would enclose the neighbour's land. It's a rural outlook, so having an X metre high fence around it which may do nothing or very little attenuation is not really a solution. Vegetation does not attenuate noise very well at all. It has to be a solid structure, either earthen or like a masonry wall. So it's not a simple solution at all.
Okay, so wall sounds pretty unfeasible aesthetic-wise, practicality. One last question, maybe a couple. So on the slide, it showed twenty-six events that were advertised. Can you just clarify for everyone here how many events are actually cleared by the DA that's been approved? With the current restrictions in place as it is right now, so yeah, this particular slide here, there were twenty-six events that are listed here. How many are actually allowed to occur at the moment?
Well, if you have a temporary, the previous temporary approvals for memory were for twelve events.
Okay, is that the COVID?
And the COVID allows you to extend it to a certain degree, but that ceased quite a while ago. One of the events there is potentially a cooking class which may be something that you could do on the site. But it's not just the number of events, it's the fact that this generates an alarmingly high amount of car parking people, often intoxicated and parking out in the front and the traffic issues on Lovedale Road, so it's not. And there's photographic evidence that the neighbours have got of some of these events going over midnight, well past liquor licensing, so we're talking about up past midnight. And when noise travels without a fence there, the noise will go to multiple properties.
Okay, are there any more, because there are another couple of councillors with questions?
Just really quickly, the traffic situation?
Yeah, look, there's only fifty metres separation between the two driveways and this is an eighty kilometre zone and there's a rise not far away. With these events, where you have events, if there are twenty-six or more or less, you've still got hundreds, sometimes over a hundred guests, it can be around a hundred vehicles. That means that will be car stacking on Lovedale Road. The neighbours hear horns on Lovedale Road reasonably regularly, that means there are a lot of near misses. Now, it sounds like it's a miracle that there hasn't been an accident because, as I said, there's no road verge to come off and go into the site from either direction. There's no stacking bay along Lovedale Road. Then at eighty kilometres an hour, coming over a ridge line and seeing five cars parked there, waiting to get in on a busy afternoon or evening, unfortunately I've got a photograph there showing that people are parking out the front on that narrow road verge. I just don't know how an accident hasn't happened yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Burke.
Thank you Mr Mayor, thank you Mr Sneddon for your presentation tonight. You mentioned a history of non-compliance. My understanding is that the current owner has not been the owner for a long period of time. Can you confirm whether those non-compliant issues that you are talking about were under this ownership or previous ownership?
Under this ownership, yeah. I've seen correspondence from council staff to numerous people. It's well documented and I've got some slides there that had that on.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Moes.
Thank you, thank you for your, thank you Mayor, thank you for your presentation. You say about the acoustics and the noise. I live in town and noise is very, very hard to try and compress. I can hear the railway hotel doof doof doofing till one-thirty in the morning on a Saturday night. So it will also, in the silence of the night, it travels. And this is the head of town, so it's not as if there's a house here and one over there. We put up with it here as well, you know, so it's very hard to compress it, you know?
It is. New South Wales EPA guidelines on noise for all industries and all development is based on sleep disturbance. So is the noise likely to disturb your sleep and if it does, then that's not acceptable. So hearing a rail, you know, with temperature versions in this community, you can hear cows mooing from several kilometres away, the rail line, but it's generally not going to wake you and that's the difference here. Loud voices yelling, talking, getting from one part of the site to the car, it's a different frequency, it's a different volume that can then enter the.
Correct, correct, so it was next door's rooster, but anyway, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. Please thank Mr Sneddon for his presentation. We now have a presentation from Mr Matt Dillo speaking against the recommendation. So thank you Mr Dillo, you'll have three minutes.
Dear Mayor, Councillors and Council Officers, my name is Matthew Dillo, sole owner of Garderman Wines established in nineteen ninety-six and the Dec Cafe established in two thousand and eleven, as well as the president of the Lovedale Business Chamber of Commerce. With dedicated thirty-two years in hospitality sector, in the last sixteen years have been devoted to the active involvement and ownership of Hunter Valley's hospitality industry with a deep commitment to contribution to the region's tourism and economic growth. The challenges imposed on COVID-nineteen pandemic promoted significant measures to adapt and preserve. The government grants were successfully weathered, the downturn in tourism ensuring the sustained operation of our business and the employment of over fifty staff. In response to the evolving landscape, we seize the opportunity presented by the state government's extension of trading hours and the hospitality sector. This allowed us to expand operations, hosting occasional evening events, light acoustic music, providing a unique experience for local residents restricted by travel limitations. The return to our original trading hours in March twenty twenty-one immensely forced the business to reduce staff numbers and it impacted the ability to host events such as cooking classes, members' nights and other wine-related events. Without extended trading hours approved, this will result in further staff reduction. Excuse me, further staff reductions and there have been countless missed opportunities for collaboration with other local businesses and especially during the busy holiday periods. We are not proposing to open every night. The hours proposed allow us flexibility on the days we might have to open for an event after six PM. Furthermore, these events will be pre-booked and numbers limited and will only occur on an average of sixty evenings per year. Basically, one event per week. To ensure harmonious coexistence with our neighbours, we pledge to notify them in advance of: Schedule live music, display signs urging guests to respect our neighbours, maintain open communication and express a willingness to install a fence or plant more trees to minimise light impact. To accommodate staff and customers through COVID with such distances, we implemented the juice bar, coffee bar, relocatable amenities and the kitchen. These developments have been an asset and have resulted in more efficiently run business. We encourage, we have engaged qualified consultants to prepare a number of reports and plans which are ready to submit to council so that we can address the non-compliance. These reports include amended acoustic reports and disability access reports. I sincerely request the support in granting Garderman Wines and the Dec Cafe Lovedale the opportunity to address the outstanding matters. Thanks for the consideration of my application.
Thank you. Are there any questions, councillors? Councillor Moes.
Thank you. Mayor, you say about your classes and all and the amount of staff. From what I've received in emails on this particular thing from job, you work a lot with Job Link and you have put a lot of people on staff. And they were including that through learning, being able to learn the skills, is that correct?
Absolutely. I work a lot with them and also two school-based trainees which we employ and put on a numerous amount of people, including disability.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wharton.
Yeah, thank you Mr Mayor, thank you for your presentation Matt. Just with regards to acoustic music, we've talked a little bit about acoustics and the need, the reports that have come back to council and then the recommendations following that. So when we're talking acoustic, what does that actually mean? Is there percussion or PA?
I think we've had a duo probably two or three times. We have had bands, but when we say bands, that's been for a personal party and it's only up to the limited hours. We've had police turn up and not had an issue with us at all. With acoustic music, it's generally been a soloist plugging in their either piano or keyboard, should I say, or a guitar in a speaker which causes it to be amplified music. And obviously with diners around, we're not playing loud music. We need our guests to keep talking and enjoying the moment as you do at any restaurant venue. It's not a pub, it's not a club, it's a place for the community and also to visitors alike that visit our region, a place to come and enjoy a great time with the surroundings we've got.
Okay, thank you. Just a question about traffic from your perspective. So an increase in business, increase of hours of operation, therefore is more cars, more traffic. In your opinion, have you cited anything that's of concern to you with the current setup the way it is? With the dips in mind, I know the road, you know, so.
Yeah, look, we have got a one point seven billion dollar freeway which makes us the gateway to the Hunter Valley and there is a lot of impact of that freeway being the gateway to our beautiful tourism area. On our property, we have a speed limit of twenty on the streets which we've got clear signs. We've actually just installed a little speed hump with speed hump signs for people. So on our property, we're limiting the speed of staff and guests and trucks or delivery drivers coming into the property. So they're not revving or making the cars a loud sound because I do understand we have neighbours very close by.
Okay, and sorry, I know you're on the hot seat, but just one last thing. What's your thoughts on a potential five-metre wall?
Well, Donald Trump wanted to do it.
Are you keeping foreign countries out?
No, I don't think a five-metre wall would be sufficient, but we'll do whatever it takes to come to a compromise and whatever council or we come to an agreement with, we're happy to oblige to.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Sander.
Thank you, thank you Mr Mayor, thank you Matt for your presentation. I've just got one question. Do you think your business is in keeping with the rural character of the area?
Absolutely, I think so. When you say rural, do we mean cattle and farming? Or do we mean what we're looking for in tourism being grapes, wines, restaurants as such? If we're talking about grapes, wines and restaurants, hundred percent. We maintain the property, it's manicured, it's looked after. The comments we get from guests and visitors alike, a hundred percent loving what we're doing. We are pretty much the first venue you see when you enter the Hunter Valley. As I said, it's probably the busiest entrance to the Hunter Valley. People don't go through Wallaby or as much as, I think the percentage is a lot higher through Lovedale. And the letters of support that I've got here is over a hundred and fifty emails this week in what we're doing and most of these letters here are stating what a beautiful property you've had and how much it's changed and how much you've looked after it to make it such an eye-turner when you drive past and how much we look after the property.
Councillor Burke.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Matt, thanks for your presentation tonight. With the expansion of what businesses could do during COVID to then taking those restrictions away, how has that, I guess briefly, how has that impacted on your business particularly?
We were able to do, the best way to put that would be, we were able to do wine dinners in the evenings. We have got an ability to be outside, which was a massive asset through COVID. So we weren't an indoor venue, so the numbers being outside and having the social distancing worked perfectly for us. Working with other wineries, doing wine dinners and also to other companies like Be Steak and Burgundy, Hunter Wine Crew, Tourism Information, who are actually having an event with us tomorrow night for two hours, which is a non-paid event, so we understand that we're allowed to open for that. And that's wine country tourism doing an industry get-together which goes for two hours with no music.
Yeah, and the New South Wales government have a push for getting live entertainment, live music back out since COVID. Do you think that a lot of the wineries in the region are doing something similar to you having to do something different because wine isn't enough anymore?
Yes, they are. I travel a lot. I do cooking tours and food classes all the way from Tasmania, Margaret River, Barossa Valley, New Zealand and also too in Italy where I spend quite a bit of time. And restaurants there and wineries as such, people are enjoying that live music scene again, especially after COVID. The business, the area of live music, professional musicians just fell in the ground and they hurt harder than us in COVID and it's been lovely to be able to have them on board and doing what they love. And people just really enjoy that light background music.
And that expansion, has that allowed you to employ more people?
Sorry, missed that one.
That expansion of entertainment, has that allowed you to employ more local people?
Yes, it has. We've got a lot of young acoustic players that come along. There's actually one girl who's seventeen years old who used to come and play, used to come and play regularly. And it was lovely to see her. She was doing majoring in music for HSE and I constantly get emails of the musicians who did do work for us during COVID. And mind you, it was only from five-thirty to eight-thirty on Friday evenings. So we weren't after going to anything, any time after eight-thirty.
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions. Let's please thank Mr Dillo for his presentation.
Thank you.
We'll now move to our deal with report PE thirty-nine twenty twenty-three. Moving, was councillor Dunn?
I'd like to move in amended motion please.
So moving the amended motion as circulated and provided on screen? Is that seconded to councillor Hill?
I will read that out. Mr Mayor, that development application eight two zero two two slash two two three one eight slash one proposing alterations additions to the existing cafe comprising an amenities building, pop-up coffee stand, juice bar, additional car parking, outdoor lighting and extended cafe trading hours at lot eighty-one DP eighty-three one six five four comma seven oh one Lovedale Road. Lovedale be deferred to afford the applicant a final opportunity to submit amended plans and additional information to address the outstanding issues raised in the assessment report and to the following assessment of the information. A report be referred to council's meeting in March twenty twenty-four to enable final consideration and determination of the application.
So speaking on that.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd firstly like to thank Mr Sneddon and Mr Dillo for coming and presenting tonight, it's quite appreciated. Um, it's, it's quite appreciated. Um, as Mr. Mr. Snedden said, um, this is a matter that's bigger than just the DA. Um, and there's a lot of issues around this DA that are compliant and that are not compliant. And we do need to separate the non-compliance with what can be passed so we can move forward. And there've been many temporary planning regulations that have been in place and removed, uh, removed due to COVID. And a lot of things that have happened in that particular location have been, um, have begun under the temporary planning, um, laws that, that have then gone on. And they could have been, um, they could have been halted, but some of them haven't. But this is the opportunity for them to move forward with those and make them, uh, realise them. And we can see there, there are many alterations to this property that we may be able to approve, but there are a lot that we can't. And the issue we have with that is, is this is one, one report that's come to us that we can't necessarily distinguish between what is and what isn't approvable. Um, we find ourselves over the last few years that businesses have struggled to survive. And, and small businesses had to move quickly and, and try and maintain their doors open when a lot of doors had to be closed. And, you know, yes, there are issues around amenity and privacy and safety. Um, but businesses, they, they've had to be agile and they've had to horizontally integrate to be able to maintain those doors and those numbers. And it, it looks as though from the outside that that's what's happened here. But as councillors, we have to draw a line in the sand because we're faced with a report. And it's a report that ultimately, as the House of Review, the council is, we, we have to say yes, no or defer. And the information that has come to us, there are a lot of compliance issues. And for us to be able to, um, lo- look at merit-based, um, a merit-based way forward, we need options to be able to justify that. And this particular report doesn't allow us to do that. So the only way we, we can really get that, um, information that we need to be able to have a merit-based argument around whether we should or shouldn't, uh, approve this is, is a deferral. So if, if we're going to talk about judging a DA on its merit, the only way we can is, um, as Mr. Dillo said, um, allow them the opportunity to, uh, uh, afford them the opportunity to put their final attempt at, um, giving us the information to be able to do that. And then allow us to then have a look at the merits of the DA. Ultimately, we're not saying at this point in time that we can or can't pass that DA, but merely that we need more information to be able to justify looking at a merit-based approval. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move this deferral.
Okay. Councillor Watton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is obviously quite a longstanding issue and I believe it was called up by three councillors back in December of last year. Before I say anything, I just want to put it forward that I actually am a small business owner myself and, and not just empathetic to the hospitality industry in general, but any small business. Uh, COVID was a terrible time. There was a lot of things, a lot of things that businesses had to do to pivot to stay relevant. And I actually, uh, did support the, the Dec Cafe over that COVID period, um, with their, their drop in meals and, and that was great. But what we have here is an issue where there is a long history of, of non-compliance. And the only solution that seems to be put forward to, to enable it to move forward to an approval is a five metre wall. And I would argue that a five metre wall in the middle of Lovedale, where people, you know, choose to buy a house there, move there, drive around there, just the rural charm of the area does not fit with the aesthetics outlined in that particular zone. Uh, councillor Moores mentioned before about the, the city of Sesnok, Sesnok itself with the pubs and clubs. This is a different zone, the primary industry and small cafes and things like that. Sure, when we look at the, the history of the, the lot, look at the history, the main cafe was actually built well before the new changes of legislation in 2010. That's a given. Can't do anything about that. Anything past that point needs to be judged in accordance with the legislation that changed in 2010. And it's, it's, I'm actually really concerned of what kind of precedence that we would set if we look to allow this particular DA to move forward. As I mentioned, I'm a strong supporter of local business, particularly hospitality. I started off chefing back in the day and I actually do work with young people unemployment. I do that to this day. Very passionate about it, but the rules are there for a reason to avoid instances like this. We've got highly qualified professionals on our council staff that work in line with legislation, that make up, uh, that work towards making up our Sesnok Local Environment Plan, their Sesnok Development Control Plans. These are not just documents that, uh, use for paperweights. These are what we're guided by. And I, they're there for a reason. They're, they're there for a reason. And if we're only going to move forward on the fact that there is going to be a five metre wall, um, I don't see how that would fit with the actual aesthetics of the area at all. So, um, I, I won't actually be supporting this, this amendment. I feel like this has been a longstanding issue and there's been quite an exhaustive amount of time to present the information that's needed in order to get this over the line. And I do that with the sole thing of, you know, we need to, like, like I just mentioned, we need these regulations in place to keep things unchecked. So we can actually, you know, live harmoniously, particularly in mixed areas like this. Because I'm concerned if, if I'm a homeowner and if I'm in the area and all we do is top-heavy favouring business, which we should, we should support business, do everything we can. But there's rules in place and there's an appetite for risk with businesses. There always is. I've got regulations that I've got to abide to with my business. And, you know, even on my personal property, which is out in North Rothbury, if I was to go start building, you know, things on the laneway, that's at my risk. I could probably expect that I'd have to tear those structures down. So I, I am just looking to abide by what we've set in place as a council. I'm concerned about moving anything forward, there'd be potential repercussions from Land Environment Court. And I feel like we need to, to back our, our policies and procedures that we have in place as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Burke?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I certainly, um, appreciate both sides, um, to this. Uh, you know, a long time ago, um, the vineyards was all about wine. Um, you know, and it is still about wine. We've got some of the best wine in the world that's produced here and, and sold here. Um, though the, the winery region needs to be more than just about wine for us to be sustainable long-term. Um, gone are the days of just opening your cellar door and selling wine and the region will thrive. Um, our township, uh, Sesnok relies on tourism. We rely on being the gateway, uh, to the Hunter Valley. Uh, and without the expansion within the vineyards, that will certainly put pressure on all of, um, our local government area. That does not dismiss that there are, as councillor Dunn has said, there's things within this application that are approvable, not approvable. Um, and, and that certainly, uh, needs to be addressed. It's hard for, for businesses because we've gone through a period of COVID where the belt was loosened, we were able to expand as businesses, employ people, um, invest money into our businesses. And then that's then tightened again. Um, and that makes it incredibly hard for businesses to be sustainable long-term. Um, I appreciate that, um, some things that are happening, that are changing in our local government area are upsetting residents. Uh, I appreciate that. We look at the Act, um, or the, yeah, the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act of 1979. It's 2023, things are different now. Things have changed and perhaps we do, we do have laws. We do have rules, we do have legislation. But perhaps some of that legislation needs to be updated to reflect in the times that we live in as well. That allows things that, you know, this businesses is trying to do. And I, I, as I said, I feel sorry for both, both sides. Um, I do say to the applicant, you know, uh, I do support councillor Dunn on this. I support, uh, more time and I suggest to the applicant to make sure that, that an application comes back addressing their concerns. And if there are, if there are concerns around compliance, that needs to be addressed. Uh, and it, there needs to be proof to show that, uh, that compliance, uh, is being looked into. There's got to be a compromise on both sides. It's not going to, to please everybody. We get that. We can't do that. Um, though, to get to the right decision, I think that a, a little bit of time, it's, it's March. You know, Chris will be here, we'll be back in this chamber before we know it. Um, but I do say the applicant brings us back something, uh, that's more compliant.
Councillor Moores?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm, I'm with councillor Dunn here because, you know, and also, you know, if you go through the vineyards of a weekend now, it doesn't matter where you go, there, there is people playing acoustic guitars and there is people singing. Sadler's Creek, every Sunday, there's, there's someone on there, you know? And that's amazing. There's, there's any pub in town, go out to the 19th. I was out the 19th a couple of Sundays ago. There's someone there playing. So it, it's a part of the atmosphere now of, of someone stringing a guitar, but they're not yelling and they're not ACDC. You know, they're not where you can't talk. But I think to put a, a five metre wall in Lovedale is we're going backwards. If we start doing, putting walls up like that, that's crazy. You know, we're knocking DA's back because it's, that was in tourism areas saying it's going to look ugly. And now here we are saying let's build a five metre wall. So we're saying one thing and doing another thing. So, no, I think it's wrong.
Councillor Groine?
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, I actually had a business out in the vineyard, so I understand the complexities of, 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 of what the, the application, applicant is going through. And I'm all about jobs. In this economic climate, we need as many jobs as we can. And we are one of the biggest, um, providers of hospitality workers anywhere. Um, and we need to support that. And I understand the issues with neighbours, but we also need to understand that Lovedale Road, since the, you know, the beginning of the Lovedale Long Lunch has become busier and busier with, over the, the years because of that highlighted Lovedale Long Lunch. Now, here is an applicant that is actually doing the best that they can to promote, you know, his wares. And, and I get that. And I also get that the, the neighbours are there. And, and the only thing I can suggest is, yes, we do need to look a lot deeper into this application. And could I suggest to the applicant that he start a, a noise register? Um, while, while we're, while we're, you know, going through these processes? Um, because I would hate to see 50 staff being told that they're not, they don't have jobs anymore. Um, so thank you, Mayor. And I am supportive of, um, your motion, councillor Dunn. Thank you.
Councillor Watton, is it a question from you? Yep.
Just with regards to, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just with regards to potential repercussions, uh, if, if things aren't in line with relevant legislation and, and documents that we have. I'm willing to take this on notice because I didn't put this in time. But what are the repercussions for a business if they don't satisfy requirements?
I think the acting director is taking that on, on notice.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Councillor Painter?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Just more of an observation. It's always very difficult for councillors in this situation to, um, weigh out the pros and cons, both for the applicant and for the, um, resident that, um, obviously that it impacts on. But, um, um, I am supportive of, um, small business and for the employment of, um, people in the area. I'm also concerned that if we don't work with the applicant to, um, help his business comply, what message that sends out to the rest of the businesses in, in the winery region, uh, which is, and it's, it is a big employer and, um, hopefully a bigger employer in the end of the future as economic things get harder and harder. Um, so I'll be supporting, um, councillor Dunn, um, tonight on this motion. And I would hope that, um, the applicant can, um, bring more, um, compliance to the table. And no matter which, how this goes in March, whether it goes for or against, that the two parties can work together in good faith to try and get a good, um, good result or a more applicable result between neighbours. That's all.
Councillor Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we have reports from council that give expert opinions. I'm usually criticised when I disagree with staff, but yet tonight we're going to go and defer against staff's expert's opinions. It's interesting. Legislation is in place. It's been why I haven't been able to stop over developments. And I've been told here that the residents need to pay attention to this, but we're not going to listen now to the legislation. COVID restrictions have been gone now for quite some time and I'm not going to be liked for this, but I'm hoping this can go away and be sorted to have the best solution possible to be looking after our residents who live in rural areas, who buy that area for this reason. I mean, I have Airbnb right next door to me and most nights it's fine. Um, but when people are outside talking, it does wake you up. So I, I feel for this, these residents that live next door to a venue that is, um, keeping them awake because rural areas, you expect it to be quiet. But it's not that I'm unsympathetic to the staff as well because we're in a bit of a, a hard situation because we want people being able to work and not be on the dole. And, um, yeah, so I, I don't know what to do with this one tonight. It's a, it's a bad one. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, in closing debate, councillor Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd really like to be clear with this. This is not about whether we agree or disagree with this DA. It's about having the information on that report for us to make a satisfactory decision. Now, this wall that's going between the proponent and the neighbour, um, it's not satisfactorily addressed in this report, and this is my point exactly. We need the opportunity, whether we agree or disagree with this DA, to have the information to be able to judge this DA. And, you know, again, you know, amenity, um, is a big factor, privacy is a big factor. And, um, as Mr. Snedden said, safety also is a big factor. But we ne- need to satisfactorily be able to address it properly and be able to judge it fairly. And the way it's come to us, there are a lot of things there that have merit and can be approved now. But we can't have approval for some, uh, some, um, stuff, but then have conditions of consent and also have, you know, stuff that we then turn down all in this one thing when, when there are reports that haven't been given to us that have already been made. This whole point is to allow us to have all of the information when it comes back to us to satisfactorily judge it. We can't do that right now. So that's basically for me, Mr. Mayor, where it ends. It's, it's not about whether we agree or disagree with this. It is about whether we can have the ability to fairly judge it or not.
Thank you. Uh, with no further debate, we'll now put the item, those in favour, recommendation. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Groine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Savell. Those against, councillors Watton and councillor Judd. Uh, I'll declare it carried. Um, now moving to the consideration and adoption of all reports by Globo, uh, call councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the recommendation that having read and considered the reports in the agenda relating to, relating to items NI seven slash 2023 Notice of Intentional Deal with Matters in Confidential Session, PE forty one slash 2023 Strategic Planning 2022/23 Annual Monitoring Report, uh, CC seventy three slash twenty twenty three, uh, the, the 2024 Ordinary Me- Council Meeting Schedule, CC seventy six slash 2023 Annual Report 2022 slash 23 hyphen 23, CC seventy six slash 2023 The Resolutions Tracking Report, CC seventy eight 2023 The Investment Report of October 2023, CC seventy nine slash 2023 The Tender T two zero two four hyphen one two Engineering Project Managers Panel, WI thirty nine slash 2023 Minutes of the Community Engagement Awards, WI forty slash 2023 Minutes of the Road Review Committee, WI forty one slash 2023 Minutes of the Flood Plane Risk Management Committee, that council adopt the recommendations as printed on those items.
Handled, councillor Burke. No debate. Uh, those in favour, it's unanimous. Okay. Now move to uh, Merrill Minute, uh, MM eight, twenty twenty three. Uh, moving this motion, uh, it was something that came up after the uh, announcement around Newcastle no longer hosting uh, supercars events uh, in our region. And uh, I, I think there's plenty of motorsport fans in our region. And we've got a world-class tourism destination that I think we could uh, benefit from something like this. So uh, this isn't about committing us to uh, anything. Uh, it's about no financial cost or anything at this stage, but saying uh, just that we, we wanna further discussions and have discussions around uh, the, with the, the ministers. Um, and uh, Destination New South Wales and supercars about the possibility of, of hosting an event in this. And uh, I might just uh, add in uh, also as a, in the middle of it. Uh, after the Minister for Jobs and Tourism, uh, to add in, uh, if I can, the Minister for Sport. Yep, so we'll just add in after the Minister for Jobs and Tourism, the Minister for Sport. Um, and I will move that way. councillor Judd.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report says that the recommendation is for council to formally engage with the minister, right? What is formally engaged? Because when I look up formally engaged, it says to employ a person, company, et cetera, to do a particular job.
Uh, my understanding of formally engaged with the, the minister would be to uh, to, to write to them requesting uh, a meeting to have discussions around this.
Okay, thank you. Express council's interest in having discussions about securing a, a supercar five hundred event in Cessnock. What would be in this, the discussions and how would you express council's interest?
Uh, I think the uh, by council supporting this would uh, express council's interest in, in having these discussions. Uh, and we would need to talk about a, a range of things, uh, starting around uh, whether their supercars are even interested in coming to our area. Uh, we would need to discuss around if they are, what any steps they would need to look at. There would be plenty of things they would need to look at if uh, a track could be put in our area. Uh, and following that would be further discussions. But um, at this stage, this isn't about locations, this isn't about um, uh, locking council into anything. This is about saying, if you're interested, we wanna have a conversation with you about how we could make this work and benefit our community.
Okay. This report also says that New South Wales Government secured this event, emphasising their commitment to major um, motorsport events, which brings me to this question. If the New South Wales Government are committed to this event, why at Newcastle's October meeting, in report eight point one two, page seventy one point two says note, the New South Wales Government has declined to support the five-year extension of the event. It just doesn't sound like they're trying to support major supports in New South, ma- motorsport in New South Wales. This seems like a lot of discussion and I don't see anything about the funding. I know you just talked about it and um, and therefore we don't need the funding source, but uh, we aren't gonna just be going to the minister and saying Cessnock wants this, you know, like you would need to have a plan, a map of a track, how you're going to fund it. And I don't see any of that here in this report. In the code of meeting practice, a Merrill Minute clause nine point one zero says Merrill, Merrill Minute makes a recommendation which, if adopted, will require the expenditure of funds on works and or services other than those already provided for in the council's current adopted operational plan, it must identify the source of funding for the expenditure. That is the subject of the recommendation. If the Merrill Minute does not identify a funding source, the council must defer conversation of the matter pending a report from the general manager on the availability of funds, right, for implementing the recommendation. I know you're saying that this is just, that eh, you know, just paperwork at this stage. But usually when these paperwork's come back, the next thing you know, we do, do pu- put it into our operational plan or it does come about. So I just don't feel like this is a good matter to um, vote on this, because the clause does say without a funding source, it should go back to the general manager on, and until his availability of funds implementing the recommendation if op- od- adopted.
councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I would say you don't need to um, have a funding source if it doesn't actually cost anything. So that's the first thing I'd like to say. Um, secondly, Mr. Mayor, can you please consider writing to the state member with regard to this to seek his support?
Yes, more than happy to add the uh, to the state member for Cessnock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and thirdly, the only thing I would say that, yes, this is a world-class destination that we have. And we most probably have the capacity to host this. But the only way we will know that is if we ask the question. So I do, I do support this. But in saying that, we now have a local, state and federal labour government. And I would imagine that we will be trying our best to make sure that this doesn't cost Cessnock council a single cent.
councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things that rubbed me the wrong way with this is uh, a month ago, we were sat here on the council night, on the full, full meeting. And you were going on Thursday, the next day to ca- to Newcastle, knowing about this uh, and didn't even mention it to us, about even thinking about it, until you jumped in front of an MBN camera and said, Cessnock will have it. So we, we were here. That's the idea of us turning up, is to be spoken to. Not to be kept in the dark until you wanna jump on the TV and say, hey, we'll take this. And, you know, I think there's a lot to do in the city without worrying about racing cars. And you just turned around and said, then, it's not gonna cost us anything. And then your, your first presentation then is at this stage, the cost, we don't know at this stage. That's what you've just said. We're not, we haven't got the money to go plain-scale electrics. We haven't got the roads, infrastructure. Director of Infrastructure, have we got the roads capable of running a, a V eight supercar race? If there is, I must be driving on the wrong ones.
Surely there's a director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, councillor Moore, it, it doesn't necessarily need to be on the roads. Um.
Oh, it's four-wheel driving, is it?
You won't know until you actually do the investigation.
Yeah, okay. I'm not for this, as far as I'm concerned. I think we've got a lot more things in this town to worry about than racing cars. Thank you.
councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, I'm actually, I'd be pretty excited, in, in all honesty, to have the Wine Country five hundred or whatever it might be. Uh, I, I've loved supercars since going back to the eighties when I was a kid, when there was Audis and Nissans racing it. Not many people remember those days, but I'm all for it, but um, I've got some concerns about our own policies choking this before it even becomes a reality. Like, for instance, our climate control risk assessments. So it's not exactly the Tesla five hundred, it's the V eight supercars, which burn petrol. And there's practice laps and, and all kinds of things. How do we, how do we get around that? Does council get involved in that?
Do you, do you wanna take the director?
Obviously, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, councillor Wadda, cap- um.
councillor Moore, cap- the director has got the floor.
councillor Watten, um, there, there's a, a, a fairly comprehensive process to go through in order to, to determine um, how you can navigate council's current policies as well as the state's. It'd be a state funded event, so the state would have to um, ensure that it can do it in a manner which was appropriate.
Hmm. I guess perhaps then my concerns, thank you for the answer, um, my concerns are the consistencies of high levels of government, because we're shutting down power stations left, right and centre. But we're okay with burning more fossil fuels for um, fun. Regardless, um, the other ca- concern I have is, yeah, potential costs. Do we have any idea of what this may cost? I, I've read what it may have cost Newcastle, the, the council. Can we get off on a pro bono agreement, you know, with, with our levels of government?
I think this is what that uh, is about, having those discussions. We won't know what they're willing to fund and, and what the, the uh, options are and what's feasible until we have the discussions. So we don't know what it's gonna cost until they work out where they can, uh, if you can have a track suited in an area. And then you can look at then what it would cost to, to do that track. So uh, at this stage, there's no answers to those questions. This is about the initial discussions
Sure.
around um, whether it's something that they're even interested in entertaining.
Investigative, also. Yep, yep, okay. Thank you.
councillor Painter.
Yeah, just briefly, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will be supporting this tonight with major reservations. Like, I agree with the comments of um, councillor Moors with um, the perception of the public with our roads being in the condition that they are. And then we gave tour, supercars um, event. However, I am interested to see whether there is an economic benefit to the area. Um, to see whether um, employment, um, tourist destination, um, ad- advertisement, the kind of stuff. So um, I'm interested to see where the um, where the cards fall. Um, with major reservations about the perception of the public, um, to um, how we um, engage in with um, what not a councillor, councillor Dunn said, would, it would need to get my support further, that no cost to council. Because we just don't have the funds to be throwing on these kind of things. And even if there is no financial cost to council, somebody on council, some director and some staff will be engaged to um, oversee it and implement it. And so in kind, there'll be some cost to council.
Yeah, councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm actually a bit gobsmacked on where this conversation has landed from your quite simple motion. Um, it, it doesn't cost a cent to have a discussion. Um, hopefully they will buy the coffees for us and we won't have to pay for those. We, we never had world-class acts at concerts in the vineyards. We never had the Posti Bike GP, the Stomp Festival, the Nostalgia Festival. We never had a lot of things, but where they all started from was discussions from vision, from passion. And as mayor, I guess you're doomed if you do or you're doomed if you don't. Um, you'd be criti- criticised because you didn't put your hand up. Um, I think it's great. So what if they come back and say, we can't have it? We're letting people know that Cessnock are wanting to have discussions around anything and everything that makes our to- our town thrive. You know, we, we now have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people visit our local area on a yearly basis because it all started with a discussion. And that's all this motion is asking for. You can bang on about clause this, clause that, where's the funding? It's a discussion. If you wanna have a serious debate, read the recommendation, get across it. This is a discussion to let the state government know, going forward, Cessnock wants to be considered. And I think that that's okay and I'm a hundred percent happy to support it.
You've already spoken, councillor Judd.
Do I have a right to reply, like with the question? Because there was a question about the funding. And I have actually evidence to show how much it costs Newcastle council, which is one point, one point six million.
I, I, I don't think there was a question. I, I, I don't think there was a question to you. Can, councillor Judd, there, there was no question, I don't believe, directed to you. Question.
Do you know how much it costs Newcastle council?
No.
One point six million.
Um, I am, um, like uh, uh, councillor Burke, I, I get a bit um, perplexed at times when people that are in um, elected positions talk down our city. Um, we, we are a world-class, we.
Excuse me, I only asked a question. Uh, you're, you're talking about me here, saying I'm against an issue. I'm not against an issue, I just want all.
It's not a point of order. And I, I'm not referring to any individual council. I'm, I'm not uh, speaking about any individual. Um, in fact, I, I've seen multiple um, uh, over this, uh, especially this de- debate, but I, I'm exactly doing that. So, um, you've already spoken, councillor Moors. That's not a. You're, you've been entitled to speak and, and as am, am I. And we are a world-class tourism destination, uh, that we should be proud of. Our city is something that, as councillor Burke says, pulled world-class acts to our area. We run amazing uh, events and festivals throughout town. Uh, and as we, we've spoken about just in a, a previous um, report, a number of councillors spoke about the importance of, of small businesses and tourism to our local economy. Uh, there is a significant benefit to, to tourism, uh, and that, that has uh, a broader impact on, on the wider uh, Cessnock economy and jobs in our area. So uh, I think that we should be looking at ways that we can uh, support uh, events in our area. Uh, and I encourage as all councillors to, to get behind uh, having discussions about things. This isn't the, the first uh, um, uh, event that uh, or, or thing that I've spoken about in my time on council. It's uh, this is actually the, the second time I've raised the, the V eight supercars in my time on council. Um, the councillors that were here last term of council may recall the, the push that I, I'd done to try and get teams based in our area uh, when the uh, event was in Newcastle. And then that was um, disrupted a little bit through Covid. But uh, we've also spoken about uh, getting uh, international soccer uh, games here. We've spoken about uh, bringing the uh, harness racing back to our local government area, which uh, has been in ongoing discussions for, for many years around uh, the future of that. So uh, I am proud of our, our city, um, and proud of what we have to offer. And I'll always be someone that, that talks positively about what we can do and talk about uh, why we should uh, bring major events like this and showcase the benefits of our city to the world. So uh, I ask all councillors to support that. Uh, we'll now move to the item. Uh, all those in favour. councillors Jackson, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Savell. Those against councillor Moors. Um, we'll now move on to uh, motions of urgency. No motions of urgency. Move to report PE forty twenty twenty three. Uh, some are moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. No debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, report CC seventy two twenty twenty three, moving that way. Uh, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Painter. No debates. Put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to report CC seventy four, uh, twenty twenty three. Uh, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, speaking on this one, councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Savell. Uh, there's a couple of items here that I sent through questions in, in advance for. And the, both of them were answered, but I just wanna make it like absolutely clear for everyone that didn't get the same answer as me, obviously, so they can have record of what's actually going on. So first of all, the Branks and the Greeter cycleway looks as though it's going ahead, which is, is fantastic. Um, so many locals are looking forward to that piece of infrastructure, so I can ride over to Greeter. Um, and vice versa. Um, the, 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 seems to be the disruptions with the, the gas under the ground is being cleared up, which is great. Um, and yeah, so I, I understand it's going out for tender, which hopefully construction does go ahead and, and picks up in um, early next year. The other one that I, so that's fantastic, but there's, there's one that I'm actually like really upset about that, that hasn't come. It like, I'm actually somewhat irate. There's been discussions about jobs here tonight. And for, for many years, we've, we've discussed jobs. I've, I've worked with young people at risk for employment. I've worked with people with disabilities for employment. I've worked with people with disabilities for employment. And there was a solution. You go and talk to any job network, any employment agency, and they will tell you what you need in this area to get a job, and that's a car and a licence, reliable transport, and then you're okay to get a job. And I put forward a motion in April last year for a pilot programme to go ahead, which gained momentum, was voted through, and we obtained funding for, which is fantastic, to work in congruence with NCA to use their vehicles. Fantastic, all going ahead, about to launch the thing. And then, sorry, kaput, because there seems to be some bureaucracy above council. I'm not blaming anyone here on council for it. I'm actually commending council for the amount of work they put into it. The economic and development team, economic development team, put so much work and research into what was a solid report and to then actually apply for the funding and to get the funding. And for anyone in their right minds to knock this on their head is absolutely ludicrous. I do not understand it. And I would challenge any minister worth their soul, if they're actually banging on about getting people jobs and stuff like that. Come out to regional New South Wales, get on your bike, ride in the middle of summer, get out to the vineyards, work if you don't die of heat stroke, and then see how you fare. And that's if you don't stink too bad, no one actually wants to work with you. So I'm actually, you know, I've looked so many people in the face that are being so excited for this, employers and prospective employees and employees that are currently hired staff in the vineyards. We've got so many jobs out there. And we've got this issue of generational unemployment, not the whole Cessnock LGA, of course not. We're a hard-working area, but we need opportunities. And if you don't have a car or licence, like I said, you've got Buckley's. So here's the solution that's come across, the council worked really hard to achieve. And sorry, you know, not today. So I'm irate and I challenge any minister to come out. I'll introduce some people. We can go talk to some families. They were really looking forward to this programme going ahead. And you can tell them why. Thank you.
Thank you. No further debate. Put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval, those against councillor Watten and Judd. I declare carried. Moving to CC seventy-five, moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. No debate. We'll put the item. All those in favour. Councillor Jackson, it's unanimous. Moving on to WI thirty-five twenty twenty-three, moving that way. Councillor Dunn, seconded councillor Hawkins. Speaking councillor Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. With regards to this tender for landslide remediation works, it's more about just making note that we've waited for a long time for this. It's something that happened with regard to natural disaster that our council did not have the capacity to deal with. And it's taken quite a while for this to come to council, but this is about us just recognising the fact that we appreciate the people of Pains Crossing in particular. But ultimately, it's for us to say, you know, it's not necessarily an apology because we've never been in a position to be able to fund this. But it's about us recognising that it's finally here and we can hopefully see the remediation works. Even though this is the first package, it's a great start and hopefully we can get the rest of of that whole run right through the Great North Road done as quickly as we can.
Okay, councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. And yeah, just to echo councillor Dunn's sentiment, this will be welcome news to the people out there on these affected roads. I'd like to thank them for their patience while we work through what are some very big issues in the areas that needed investigation. And then there's of course the layer of funding that we've had to work through. So just thank you to our staff for working through those things. I'm sure there's countless hours and a lot of expertise and learning experiences that have come from that. But also to the community that have persevered. I know there's been some issues with compliance traffic management abeyance that people are getting very, very frustrated. I hope this will come as news to them that there is a light at the end of the tunnel, that we are progressing, albeit not as fast as any of us would have liked, but there are steps that have to be worked through. So I think I might commend this to the staff. Thank you very much for their work. Please pass that on. And to the community, just we are working. It may seem slow and tedious at times, but we're doing the best we can. And I thank them for that.
Thank you. No further debate. Let's put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Moving on, WI thirty-six twenty twenty-three, moved councillor Dunn, seconded councillor Burke. Speaking.
Yep, thank you, Mr Mayor. Today is Wednesday, the fifteenth of November twenty twenty-three. It's taken the best part of the seven years that I've been on this council to campaign for funding to start our very first turn soil on a tender for South Cessnock Bund Wall. And this is the start and we're finally at a point where we are awarding a tender and we can get on board with that. So I am sure there are quite a lot of South Cessnock people that are absolutely ecstatic that they've waited so long for this to actually see some, a tree that's borne some fruit. I just want to say thank you very much for the people of South Cessnock and their patience, but we've still got a long way to go. This is definitely not a tender for a Bund Wall. It's a start, but we are having to start somewhere. And this is certainly the on-the-ground turn shovel start that we were hoping for.
Okay, councillor Moors.
I'd like to just say, and also Mayor, that the people at South Cessnock, they are over the moon with this. And obviously the people that's lost their houses more than once and twice. And furniture, it's going to be a great thing to happen and I hope it just continues on and on and on until it's finished.
Okay, no further debate. We'll put the item. All those in favour. It's unanimous. Moving on to WI thirty-seven, we'll just wait for councillor Judd to leave. Okay, moving that way councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Dunn. Speaking councillor Hawkins.
Oh, Mr Mayor, just briefly, this is a big project for Cessnock. This is twenty years securing our future to manage our own landfill and our waste management strategy. That's huge by any means because we will be in control of what we do, how we do it, when we do it, and most importantly, the cost of what we do it as. This is, we start saving money from the day we start digging, basically, being able to use our own materials that come out in the capping of the existing landfill site. And then we continue to move on from there. So it is a large outlay and a very big commitment from the council. I'd like to commend the staff involved in getting it to this stage. It's a big project, a big commitment, but I think it will be a huge return in the long term. And it sets our city up this part for the next twenty years and hopefully beyond. So, thank you.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a big investment over the next eighteen to twenty years to secure our waste disposal centre. I think having been able to use the landfill that comes out of the new site onto the, kept the old site and keep all those trucks off our roads can only benefit the area. And to ensure, one of council's major responsibilities is to take care of our own waste in our own area. It's important rather than to outsource that. So I support this hundred percent. And waste into the future is going to be a bigger and bigger issue and have more and more cost. And we should, at this stage, not only for the next twenty years, but for the next twenty years after that, because I think we should always as a council take care of our own issues. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I guess for me, it's just recognising that stage one has been brought upon us a little bit quicker than we thought. And it's a necessity. We don't really have any options other than to do this. And the costs aren't really negotiable. When we see, we go through to stage two to stage four and then the options for us to either do our landfill, the the amount of landfill that comes to us just from us or from other councils, that's for another meeting. Where we're at right now is we need to basically go forward with what we've got. And this stage, basically, as I said, it's non-negotiable. We don't really have a choice. We need to secure our future and this is pretty much the only way we can do it. So I support this.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. As I say, we haven't got anything. We're sat on our hands with this, which we have to go forward. Because also, once this is finished, we should be starting the second one. Because as we're sitting on sixty-one thousand people now in Cessnock, by the year you're talking about of the time, the other one is complete and full, there's going to be a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand people in Cessnock, according to the meeting that was set about this. So obviously we've got to keep moving forward as we get one done, it's straight away on to another one. Because the population is growing so fast in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Saval. I totally echo that sentiment. We're a rapidly growing region, there's no doubt about it. And we need the infrastructure. This is one of those important pieces of infrastructure this region needs. And look, to be honest with you, when I saw the cost analysis, I nearly fell off my chair. But I'm somewhat, when I looked at the eleven million dollar grant that we've applied for, I was, you know, I see this great investment regardless, but just a question on the grant, is there any potential ETA on that grant that we know of?
Director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Watten, there's no determination on that grant at this point in time. If we get any determination, it won't be until early next year, which we can't afford to wait for.
Early next year? Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further debate. We'll put the item. All those in favour. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll now move to report number WI thirty-eight twenty twenty-three, moving that way councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Grine. Speaking councillor Grine.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Thank you very much for finally getting this traffic and transport study done. I just wanted to highlight that, you know, compared to the twenty eighteen transport strategy, we're looking at a hundred and twelve thousand people in our LGA by the year twenty forty-one, over a million visitors per year. The largest average group that lives in our LGA is between the age of thirty-five and forty-nine. We currently have sixty-four thousand. We are the second largest growing area in New South Wales. We are number eleven in Australia. So we need to be ready for this. You know, and I agree with you, Mayor Saval, that we do need to write to the minister and start asking for some more funds to get ready for this massive growth that we're experiencing. I want to commend the staff in having this ready to go and also make a note of letting the people out there know as well that fifty-five percent travel into this, into our town to work. That live in Cessnock. So that's, you know, our roads are going to get hammered even more so. So any expansion or upgrades that we can get, and you all know, sitting here, that we struggle financially and we rely very heavily on grants. So I support council in the work that they've done and I'm going to keep supporting them to, you know, make our cities bigger and better, but, you know, also push for getting more money for this infrastructure that we're going to require for our LGA. Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor, or Mr Mayor. I just would like to encourage residents to make sure they read this and put their submissions in. I highly suggest reading any of the reports, policies council has that are mentioned on page one oh six. The LGA growth and new development, traffic congestions, car dependence, urban spread, tourism, health and aging population, journey to work, climate change, road safety and road management. Through this public consultation and independent review, the CTS two thousand and twenty-three highlights a number of key transport challenges facing the Cessnock LGA, meaning these policies is how they decide what they think the town needs. For example, the four lanes on Wollombi Road. Thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I'd like to possibly just move a small amendment to dot point one for this recommendation in regards to the length of the public exhibition. I make note that we are making this decision here in November and that period of six weeks would sort of only cover across the period of Christmas and holidays and in the new year. I'd like to move that that period of six weeks be extended to a period of twelve weeks if possible with additional, and then just make note that I would like to see council undertake a few physical drop-in sessions for this consultation. Recently, I've had some community consultation with councillor Painter and the mayor out in Mulbring, where they expressed their interest in having some input into this strategy during exhibition.
Okay, so it's moved that it go from six to, yeah, change the word six to twelve. And the mover was councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Grine, happy with that?
Yep.
Okay, yep. So it's now the motion. Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, look, Mr Mayor, thank you. Just briefly, I'd like to point to some of the information in this strategy that makes reference to quite a lot of transport links, particularly around the Bellbird North urban release area and the staging of such and when projects will come online. I note there's a lot of angst, I suppose, within the community at the moment. And it seems to be that it's an either or, we can only have a link road or we can only have a Wollombi Road corridor upgrade. And that's just not correct. There's a staging process where each of the things will be required. I suppose the term is that they'll be justified. So I would ask people to read the report in its entirety and please make a submission. We welcome feedback. But please make it based on the entire report and the context that it is. And that is that it's a strategic document for the planning for the next twenty years as we grow. A lot of these strategies start years before and we're in the middle point years after. This is, what is it called? The term is live document, I think, that is reviewed. It's not locked in anything specific. It's simply a strategy that we can work towards. And that I think if people look at it, they'll be quite satisfied, I suppose, that their concerns have been listened, that council are aware of our current challenges as well as our future anticipated challenges. And that these are the practical steps we're implementing to be able to meet those challenges. And to be able to go forward and ask for grant funding or other agencies' assistance where it may or may not become available. So yeah, I would just recommend that people have a read of the document and by all means, put in an official, an actual submission, and I welcome what those submissions will look like when we come back in the new year. So, thank you.
Just a quick question. Councillor Hill just said about doing pop-up information sessions. Should that be up there with the point?
I think that would be included, but we can ask the.
Because it's not written there. Cause it's not written there and we usually have it written there if we're going to do it. Cause that, that just doesn't say that we have to.
Um.
Um, Mister Mayor, yeah, I can answer that. Uh, thanks Mister Mayor. Um, councillor Jurd, we, we went through an extensive um consultation process to get to where we are with the strategy. We're asking for this to go on public display at this point, so it gives the wider community that opportunity to make comments on what's in the document itself.
Okay, I, I was just, just that councillor Hill, I'd ask that, cause I mean, if someone has a question on it that might not have already spoke to you, how would they how would they ask the question? The pop, the pop-up gives them an opportunity to come to the right staff members to ask a question on the strategy. And I just think it would just be great practice if we could add that.
Director.
Thank you, um Mister Mayor. Um, councillor Jurd, we can, we can consider that. Um, we do have, we'll have a have your say uh segment within the, the website itself. Um, similar to any other document that we, or strategy we've put on display in the past, you know, it's an open forum, but um if we get considerable uh interest in, in the feedback, as per the communication channels, we can by all means consider putting a uh community session up.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, um, if we, because councillor Hawkins has closed the debate in, in, as the mover of the, the speaker, as there was no one else speaking at that point, but is there a question councillor Moors before we?
Yeah, I was just saying, the question is, over the period, I, I, I thought about a pop-up myself, but obviously Cessnock over the Christmas period is gonna be dead. So I think really, I don't think we're gonna gain anything by it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now put the uh item and um I, before we do, I want to echo the, the, the words of councillor Jurd and councillor Hawkins and, and others that have said to the community to please review the documents and provide feedback. Uh, there's many documents that we go out on, on public exhibition for feedback for. Uh, some uh gather a, a large amount of interest, some gather a very small amount of interest. But uh it's really important for council to make sure we get all that feedback uh collated and, and heard. So uh please review the document in full and uh provide feedback. We'll vote on the item. Those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, we'll now move to uh correspondence, uh report C O five twenty twenty three. Um, there's moving that way councillor Hill, uh has a, an additional dot point on it from the original recommendation, seconded councillor Burke. Um, did you want to speak on that councillor?
No, just to, just to state that the additional dot point um be included, that council reply uh to the minister there. So that's up on the screen.
Okay, alright. Councillor Jurd.
Oh, thank you Mister Mayor. I just had a quick question. What it says about housing supply, does that mean more of a push for the infill housing? Like that we've been doing a lot of the strata type developments happening in Cessnock, like Sixth Street, South Cessnock, for example? Would that be something that this is relevant to?
Um, did the acting director want to comment on that or, or maybe take the details on, on notice, but um the, there, there's been a number of gen- general emails, sorry, general letters from the, the minister um over the last few months about the need to increase housing due to the housing supply
Mm-hmm.
uh shortage.
Yeah.
Um, and asking councils to do what they can to make sure there is uh more housing stock available. Um, and the, the, I think the, the letter, um which I have circulated to um council laws as a, a draft to work back is saying that we are doing our fair share. Um, and I think some would argue probably more than our fair share in uh in actually uh releasing the amount of housing. But the state government also needs to provide support for some communities like ours. If we're going to uh have this amount of housing, we need upgraded uh, uh infrastructure, whether it's roads, whether that's community and social infrastructure, like sporting facilities, parks, libraries, the, the lot. And so it's uh all good for, for ministers to say just approve more. But you can't do that without the supports that our communities need, so.
Is that the email you sent today?
Yes.
Okay, it wouldn't open on my computer for some reason, so I didn't read it. Um, still won't open. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Saval. I just want to, you know, hundred percent get behind this because as someone that works in the uh social welfare side of things, it's one of the things we do in the community. Uh, so many people coming through that are at risk of homelessness or are homeless. There's people living out in the back of Neath. Um, in caravans and, you know, swags, if they're even lucky to get that. And it's only right that high levels of government actually put some money where their mouth is and help with the infrastructure to cope with this, this issue. When you've got rentals going, the three-bedroom houses that are upwards of like six hundred, six hundred and fifty dollars a week, it's unaffordable for many people. And yeah, that's, let's get all the assistance we can get.
Thank you. Uh, no further debate. We'll now put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, councillor reports, uh councillor Hawkins.
Uh, yes Mister Mayor, thank you. Um, it was my pleasure to be in the company of staff and the community representatives uh to, to attend the twenty twenty three New South Wales Tidy Towns Awards that were held in Skown over the weekend of three to five November. Um, the Tidy Towns Awards have evolved to encompass projects and initiatives with a focus on environmental sustainability and resource management, reflecting a growing awareness of the importance of community-led environmental actions. The awards recognise the hard work undertaken by regional towns, councils, schools, individuals and groups, encouraging the sharing of best practices and ideas that enhance our rural towns. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognise and thank our nine active tidy towns groups across our L G A. Um, that being Cessnock, Weston, Paxton, North Rothbury Tidy Towns, North Rothbury Bush Care, Greata Elong, Kersley and Brankston. Um, there's ninety six registered participants across these groups that um that give their time to undertake community uh enhancement projects that make our city part of the beautiful city that, that we're fortunate enough uh to live in. Um, I can report that next year's awards will be held in Bathurst as, as Bathurst was the overall uh winner of the categories that we were mentioned in. Um, Mister Mayor, we were highly commended in the uh category of climate change mitigation and adoption. Uh, that would be for our category E, um category for that. A special commendation was issued to the founder of our tidy towns, Miss Alison Davies. Um, I think it was, it, it was a pleasure and a privilege to be able to accompany Alison up to uh, to receive that award. Recognizing many, many years of her service to the community through the tidy towns uh movement. Um, she was integral in setting up tidy towns and, and she's been actively involved throughout her political career, but long, long after her political career has, has moved on and um and she's still very, very active. So I think it was, it was wonderful. Um, I'd, I'd also like to make mention um of the acknowledgement for the late Mick Haynes um that was acknowledged on the, the night. Um, Mick was a tireless worker for Weston Tidy Towns. Um, anyone that, that had the privilege of knowing Mick knows that he put a lot of effort into um, into the, the town that he loved and, and he's gonna be sadly missed because he was such an active member. Um, I'll leave my report at that Mister Mayor. Um, and anything, I believe you were also uh involved in the, the weekend. And if you'd like to add anything, then I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh councillor Hawkins. And, and yes, I'd just like to echo your comments on the, the thing. It was something that I had the, the pleasure of uh uh attending the presentations for the, for the morning session, uh where we had Stephen and um Maureen Lind uh from North Rothbury uh receive uh awards and uh Brankston Community Hall as, as well. Um, earlier this afternoon, uh we had a, a brief presentation with uh former mayor Alison Davy in the council chambers here um to acknowledge her uh a tremendous contribution to uh the, the region and, and following her award from uh Tidy Towns. Uh, so uh yeah, very su- supportive of, of the work that, that they've done and, and all the volunteers that continue to do uh yeah, day in, day out to make our community a better place. No further councillor reports. Uh, we'll now have someone move that we go into the confidential session. Move councillor Dunn, seconded councillor Burke. Uh, no debate. Uh, well, all those in favour. It's unanimous.